Bienvenidos a todos, bienvenidos a todos señores, estamos casi en el punto de la cumbre del concierto de la ciudad. Tenemos tres minutos presentes. Estamos aquí en el fondo. Estamos aquí en el fondo. Bienvenidos.
Bienvenidos a todos, bienvenidos a todos señores, estamos casi en el punto de la cumbre del concierto de la ciudad. Tenemos tres minutos presentes. Estamos aquí en el fondo. Estamos aquí en el fondo. Bienvenidos. Bienvenidos a todos, bienvenidos a todos señores, estamos casi en el punto de la cumbre del concierto de la ciudad. Tenemos tres minutos presentes. Estamos aquí en el fondo. Estamos aquí en el fondo. Bienvenidos. Bienvenidos a todos, bienvenidos a todos señores, estamos casi en el punto de la cumbre del concierto de la ciudad. Tenemos tres minutos presentes. Estamos aquí en el fondo. Estamos aquí en el fondo. Bienvenidos. Bienvenidos a todos, bienvenidos a todos señores, estamos casi en el punto de la cumbre del concierto de la ciudad. Tenemos tres minutos presentes. Estamos aquí en el fondo. Estamos aquí en el fondo. Bienvenidos. Bienvenidos a todos, bienvenidos a todos señores, estamos casi en el punto de la cumbre del concierto de la ciudad. Tenemos tres minutos presentes. Estamos aquí en el fondo. Estamos aquí en el fondo. Bienvenidos. Bienvenidos a todos, bienvenidos a todos señores, estamos casi en el punto de la cumbre del concierto de la ciudad. Tenemos tres minutos presentes. Estamos aquí en el fondo. Estamos aquí en el fondo. Bienvenidos. Bienvenidos a todos, bienvenidos a todos señores, estamos casi en el punto de la cumbre del concierto de la ciudad. Tenemos tres minutos presentes. Estamos aquí en el fondo. Estamos aquí en el fondo. Bienvenidos. Bienvenidos a todos, bienvenidos a todos señores, estamos casi en el punto de la cumbre del concierto de la ciudad. Tenemos tres minutos presentes. Estamos aquí en el fondo. Estamos aquí en el fondo. Bienvenidos. Bienvenidos a todos, bienvenidos a todos señores, estamos casi en el punto de la cumbre del concierto de la ciudad. Tenemos tres minutos presentes. Estamos aquí en el fondo. Estamos aquí en el fondo. Bienvenidos. Bienvenidos a todos, bienvenidos a todos señores, estamos casi en el punto de la cumbre del concierto de la ciudad. Tenemos tres minutos presentes. Estamos aquí en el fondo. Estamos aquí en el fondo. Bienvenidos. Bienvenidos a todos, bienvenidos a todos señores, estamos casi en el punto de la cumbre del concierto de la ciudad. Tenemos tres minutos presentes. Estamos aquí en el fondo. Estamos aquí en el fondo. Bienvenidos.
Bienvenidos a todos, bienvenidos a todos señores, estamos casi en el punto de la cumbre del concierto de la ciudad. Tenemos tres minutos presentes. Estamos aquí en el fondo. Estamos aquí en el fondo. Bienvenidos. Bienvenidos a todos, bienvenidos a todos señores, estamos casi en el punto de la cumbre del concierto de la ciudad. Tenemos tres minutos presentes. Estamos aquí en el fondo. Estamos aquí en el fondo. Bienvenidos. Bienvenidos a todos, bienvenidos a todos señores, estamos casi en el punto de la cumbre del concierto de la ciudad. Tenemos tres minutos presentes. Estamos aquí en el fondo. Estamos aquí en el fondo. Bienvenidos. Bienvenidos a todos, bienvenidos a todos señores, estamos casi en el punto de la cumbre del concierto de la ciudad. Tenemos tres minutos presentes. Estamos aquí en el fondo. Estamos aquí en el fondo. Bienvenidos. Bienvenidos a todos, bienvenidos a todos señores, estamos casi en el punto de la cumbre del concierto de la ciudad. Tenemos tres minutos presentes. Estamos aquí en el fondo. Estamos aquí en el fondo. Bienvenidos. Bienvenidos a todos, bienvenidos a todos señores, estamos casi en el punto de la cumbre del concierto de la ciudad. Tenemos tres minutos presentes. Estamos aquí en el fondo. Estamos aquí en el fondo. Bienvenidos. Bienvenidos a todos, bienvenidos a todos señores, estamos casi en el punto de la cumbre del concierto de la ciudad. Tenemos tres minutos presentes. Estamos aquí en el fondo. Estamos aquí en el fondo. Bienvenidos. Bienvenidos a todos, bienvenidos a todos señores, estamos casi en el punto de la cumbre del concierto de la ciudad. Tenemos tres minutos presentes. Estamos aquí en el fondo. Estamos aquí en el fondo. Bienvenidos. Bienvenidos a todos, bienvenidos a todos señores, estamos casi en el punto de la cumbre del concierto de la ciudad. Tenemos tres minutos presentes. Estamos aquí en el fondo. Estamos aquí en el fondo. Bienvenidos. Bienvenidos a todos, bienvenidos a todos señores, estamos casi en el punto de la cumbre del concierto de la ciudad. Tenemos tres minutos presentes. Estamos aquí en el fondo. Estamos aquí en el fondo. Bienvenidos. Bienvenidos a todos, bienvenidos a todos señores, estamos casi en el punto de la cumbre del concierto de la ciudad. Tenemos tres minutos presentes. Estamos aquí en el fondo. Estamos aquí en el fondo. Bienvenidos. Bienvenidos a todos, bienvenidos a todos señores, estamos casi en el punto de la cumbre del concierto de la ciudad. Tenemos tres minutos presentes. Estamos aquí en el fondo. Estamos aquí en el fondo. Bienvenidos. Bienvenidos a todos, bienvenidos a todos señores, estamos casi en el punto de la cumbre del concierto de la ciudad. Tenemos tres minutos presentes. Estamos aquí en el fondo. Estamos aquí en el fondo. Bienvenidos. Bienvenidos a todos, bienvenidos a todos señores, estamos casi en el punto de la cumbre del concierto de la ciudad. Tenemos tres minutos presentes. Estamos aquí en el fondo. Estamos aquí en el fondo. Bienvenidos. Bienvenidos a todos, bienvenidos a todos señores, estamos casi en el punto de la cumbre del concierto de la ciudad. Tenemos tres minutos presentes. Estamos aquí en el fondo. Estamos aquí en el fondo. Bienvenidos. Bienvenidos a todos, bienvenidos a todos señores, estamos casi en el punto de la cumbre del concierto de la ciudad. Tenemos tres minutos presentes. Estamos aquí en el fondo. Estamos aquí en el fondo. Bienvenidos. Bienvenidos a todos, bienvenidos a todos señores, estamos casi en el punto de la cumbre del concierto de la ciudad. Tenemos tres minutos presentes. Estamos aquí en el fondo. Estamos aquí en el fondo. Bienvenidos. Bienvenidos a todos, bienvenidos a todos señores, estamos casi en el punto de la cumbre del concierto de la ciudad. Tenemos tres minutos presentes. Estamos aquí en el fondo. Estamos aquí en el fondo. Bienvenidos. Bienvenidos a todos, bienvenidos a todos señores, estamos casi en el punto de la cumbre del concierto de la ciudad. Tenemos tres minutos presentes. Estamos aquí en el fondo. Estamos aquí en el fondo. Bienvenidos. Bienvenidos a todos, bienvenidos a todos señores, estamos casi en el punto de la cumbre del concierto de la ciudad. Tenemos tres minutos presentes. Estamos aquí en el fondo. Estamos aquí en el fondo. Bienvenidos. Bienvenidos a todos, bienvenidos a todos señores, estamos casi en el punto de la cumbre del concierto de la ciudad. Tenemos tres minutos presentes. Estamos aquí en el fondo. Estamos aquí en el fondo. Bienvenidos. Bienvenidos a todos, bienvenidos a todos señores, estamos casi en el punto de la cumbre del concierto de la ciudad. Tenemos tres minutos presentes. Estamos aquí en el fondo. Estamos aquí en el fondo. Bienvenidos. Bienvenidos a todos, bienvenidos a todos señores, estamos casi en el punto de la cumbre del concierto de la ciudad. Tenemos tres minutos presentes. Estamos aquí en el fondo. Estamos aquí en el fondo. Bienvenidos. Bienvenidos a todos, bienvenidos a todos señores, estamos casi en el punto de la cumbre del concierto de la ciudad. Tenemos tres minutos presentes. Estamos aquí en el fondo. Estamos aquí en el fondo. Bienvenidos. Bienvenidos a todos, bienvenidos a todos señores, estamos casi en el punto de la cumbre del concierto de la ciudad. Tenemos tres minutos presentes. Estamos aquí en el fondo. Estamos aquí en el fondo. Bienvenidos. Bienvenidos a todos, bienvenidos a todos señores, estamos casi en el punto de la cumbre del concierto de la ciudad. Tenemos tres minutos presentes. Estamos aquí en el fondo. Estamos aquí en el fondo. Bienvenidos. Bienvenidos a todos, bienvenidos a todos señores, estamos casi en el punto de la cumbre del concierto de la ciudad. Tenemos tres minutos presentes. Estamos aquí en el fondo. Estamos aquí en el fondo. Bienvenidos. Bienvenidos a todos, bienvenidos a todos señores, estamos casi en el punto de la cumbre del concierto de la ciudad. Tenemos tres minutos presentes. Estamos aquí en el fondo. Estamos aquí en el fondo. Bienvenidos. Bienvenidos a todos, bienvenidos a todos señores, estamos casi en el punto de la cumbre del concierto de la ciudad. Tenemos tres minutos presentes. Estamos aquí en el fondo. Estamos aquí en el fondo. Bienvenidos. Bienvenidos a todos, bienvenidos a todos señores, estamos casi en el punto de la cumbre del concierto de la ciudad. Tenemos tres minutos presentes. Estamos aquí en el fondo. Estamos aquí en el fondo. Bienvenidos. Bienvenidos a todos, bienvenidos a todos señores, estamos casi en el punto de la cumbre del concierto de la ciudad. Tenemos tres minutos presentes. Estamos aquí en el fondo. Estamos aquí en el fondo. Bienvenidos. Bienvenidos a todos, bienvenidos a todos señores, estamos casi en el punto de la cumbre del concierto de la ciudad. Tenemos tres minutos presentes. Estamos aquí en el fondo. Estamos aquí en el fondo. Bienvenidos. Bienvenidos a todos, bienvenidos a todos señores, estamos casi en el punto de la cumbre del concierto de la ciudad. Tenemos tres minutos presentes. Estamos aquí en el fondo. Estamos aquí en el fondo. Bienvenidos. Bienvenidos a todos, bienvenidos a todos señores, estamos casi en el punto de la cumbre del concierto de la ciudad. Tenemos tres minutos presentes. Estamos aquí en el fondo. Estamos aquí en el fondo. Bienvenidos. Bienvenidos a todos, bienvenidos a todos señores, estamos casi en el punto de la cumbre del concierto de la ciudad. Tenemos tres minutos presentes. Estamos aquí en el fondo. Estamos aquí en el fondo. Bienvenidos. Bienvenidos a todos, bienvenidos a todos señores, estamos casi en el punto de la cumbre del concierto de la ciudad. Tenemos tres minutos presentes. Estamos aquí en el fondo. Estamos aquí en el fondo. Bienvenidos. Bienvenidos a todos, bienvenidos a todos señores, estamos casi en el punto de la cumbre del concierto de la ciudad. Tenemos tres minutos presentes. Estamos aquí en el fondo. Estamos aquí en el fondo. Bienvenidos. Bienvenidos a todos, bienvenidos a todos señores, estamos casi en el punto de la cumbre del concierto de la ciudad. Tenemos tres minutos presentes. Estamos aquí en el fondo. Estamos aquí en el fondo. Bienvenidos. Bienvenidos a todos, bienvenidos a todos señores, estamos casi en el punto de la cumbre del concierto de la ciudad. Tenemos tres minutos presentes. Estamos aquí en el fondo. Estamos aquí en el fondo. Bienvenidos. Bienvenidos a todos, bienvenidos a todos señores, estamos casi en el punto de la cumbre del concierto de la ciudad. Tenemos tres minutos presentes. Estamos aquí en el fondo. Estamos aquí en el fondo. Bienvenidos. Bienvenidos a todos, bienvenidos a todos señores, estamos casi en el punto de la cumbre del concierto de la ciudad. Tenemos tres minutos presentes. Estamos aquí en el fondo. Estamos aquí en el fondo. Bienvenidos. Bienvenidos a todos, bienvenidos a todos señores, estamos casi en el punto de la cumbre del concierto de la ciudad. Tenemos tres minutos presentes. Estamos aquí en el fondo. Estamos aquí en el fondo. Bienvenidos. Bienvenidos a todos, bienvenidos a todos señores, estamos casi en el punto de la cumbre del concierto de la ciudad. Tenemos tres minutos presentes. Estamos aquí en el fondo. Estamos aquí en el fondo. Bienvenidos. Bienvenidos a todos, bienvenidos a todos señores, estamos casi en el punto de la cumbre del concierto de la ciudad. Tenemos tres minutos presentes. Estamos aquí en el fondo. Estamos aquí en el fondo. Bienvenidos. Bienvenidos a todos, bienvenidos a todos señores, estamos casi en el punto de la cumbre del concierto de la ciudad. Tenemos tres minutos presentes. Estamos aquí en el fondo. Estamos aquí en el fondo. Bienvenidos. Bienvenidos a todos, bienvenidos a todos señores, estamos casi en el punto de la cumbre del concierto de la ciudad. Tenemos tres minutos presentes. Estamos aquí en el fondo. Estamos aquí en el fondo. Bienvenidos. Bienvenidos a todos, bienvenidos a todos señores, estamos casi en el punto de la cumbre del concierto de la ciudad. Tenemos tres minutos presentes. Estamos aquí en el fondo. Estamos aquí en el fondo. Bienvenidos. Bienvenidos a todos, bienvenidos a todos señores, estamos casi en el punto de la cumbre del concierto de la ciudad. Tenemos tres minutos presentes. Estamos aquí en el fondo. Estamos aquí en el fondo. Bienvenidos. Bienvenidos a todos, bienvenidos a todos señores, estamos casi en el punto de la cumbre del concierto de la ciudad. Tenemos tres minutos presentes. Estamos aquí en el fondo. Estamos aquí en el fondo. Bienvenidos. Bienvenidos a todos, bienvenidos a todos señores, estamos casi en el punto de la cumbre del concierto de la ciudad. Tenemos tres minutos presentes. Estamos aquí en el fondo. Estamos aquí en el fondo. Bienvenidos. Bienvenidos a todos, bienvenidos a todos señores, estamos casi en el punto de la cumbre del concierto de la ciudad. Tenemos tres minutos presentes. Estamos aquí en el fondo. Estamos aquí en el fondo. Bienvenidos a todos, bienvenidos a todos señores, estamos casi en el punto de la cumbre del concierto de la ciudad. Tenemos tres minutos presentes. Estamos aquí en el fondo. Estamos aquí en el fondo. Bienvenidos. Bienvenidos a todos, bienvenidos a todos señores, estamos casi en el punto de la cumbre del concierto de la ciudad. Tenemos tres minutos presentes. Estamos aquí en el fondo. Estamos aquí en el fondo. Bienvenidos. Bienvenidos a todos, bienvenidos a todos señores, estamos casi en el punto de la cumbre del concierto de la ciudad. Tenemos tres minutos presentes. Estamos aquí en el fondo.
11 ayes.
Next item, please.
Back to the items called special, item 12. I know that many of you are very patiently listening to three hours of testimony on the redevelopment plan. I would like to ask speakers to keep their comments to about a minute.
Members who have a motion to reopen the public hearing for a period of five minutes. And technically, we're not reopening public comment. I understand we're taking additional public comment. Is there any objection? Let's proceed to hear from members of the public on item number 12. Will the following people please come forward in line up behind the podium? Council calls Mr. Leonard Shapiro, David Morgan, Chris Shabel, Howard Watts, John Walsh, and Robert Blue, total of five minutes.
Okay, David Morgan, Howard, and Better Government Association. The public power private gain book has now been released, and we filed a copy of it on eminent domain takings for private interest. This is completely illegal, as I said last time. I had just given you a copy of all the members of the council. The conspiracy CRA, CRA's lobbyist, CRA Association, California, we, City Council's paying him over $100,000 in lobbying fees, and he's exposed the inner secrets of the CRA. It's in the declarations submitted. And last, but most important, is the budget. I've given each council member a copy of the document showing how $500 million can be recovered from the CIA interest fund in the years to come. They will transfer the project to the City Municipal Code. If you need money for the police, this is the way to get it. If you want to balance your budget, here's a lot of money available, and some of it will be available in the coming years. So please consider this. Thank you.
Very much.
John Walsh. Hollywood is a hellhole just yesterday. A carjacking, a murder, a week ago. Capitol records in front of the building, a murder. Hollywood has been de-developed by the CRA. And this agency, this board, spends all your time putting together your discretionary accounts to help your friends and give all money to your buddies. Listen, you have a one and a half billion dollar CRA debt. You know what Chief Bratton said when you rejected more police? He said that this city council was issuing an invitation to Osama bin Laden. He said terrorism is the result. Now you want to lift the debt limit and allow this agency to spend more of our money off the top of the city property taxes. You know what's happening here today? Every one of you is issuing another one, another invitation to Osama bin Laden, the CRA's best friend. And I want to tell you, the Chief Bratton eye, well, if an officer is killed because you didn't put enough money, when you couldn't find the money for the CRA, we are going to dip our hands in the blood of the fallen officer and splatter in the faces of every single city council in here. That's what happened.
Thank you very much. Next speaker, please.
My name is Leonard Shapiro. I come here once in a while. I write for the Watch Times and the Plukent Times. I want everybody here to understand what community redevelopment stands for, the CRA. Too many people don't know it. The money from the CRA financing comes from property taxes of the future, of our children and our grandchildren, who are being saddled by you right now. You make the loan, you put it on there, and then they have to pay the end. Don't kid yourself. This thing should be treated just like if it were appropriate. From the city council, you are appropriating dollars to be spent. Don't think it's something you're getting free. It isn't free. It's property taxes, and we have to understand that. Like, in the Hollywood area at the present time, there was $150 million of city tax property dollars spent to build a parking structure. And then $50 million was spent to roads to come into the parking structure. $200 million was spent. Can't you use that $200 million now? There's no reason that that money could be used. And you've got to use it effectively. You're wasting it.
Thank you very much. We have a minute fifteen left. Three speaker cards. Robert Blue, Howard Watts, Chris Shabel.
Thank you. The issue here is not whether you should pass the Hollywood plan or oppose it. You should leave it alone. You do not have the right to interfere with Hollywood's area. The only one that does is Eric Garcetti. He's our representative. Nobody else has any right in Hollywood. You're too far out of Hollywood. I want you to know that obviously you should send us back to the CRA for further work. They have not done their job whatsoever on this plan. They have had very little input from the community. No community meetings in Hollywood at all by the CRA. And actually, this should be done in Hollywood by the city council. Also, you are not to be down here by yourself and telling us what to do in Hollywood. We know what to do for Hollywood. We don't need you dictating us in any part, for that matter, of the city of L.A. You are only supposed to do what we ask you to do, not what you want to do. That is the right way to manage the political situation. Muchas gracias. And that's why we need to get a bunch of dogs down here and let them park at you every time, sometimes do something wrong, and that's all.
Next speaker, please. Good morning, Robert Blue. Thank you. When we mention eminent domain, most people think about highway projects, a school or a fire station. Let's speak clear. The use of eminent domain in the Hollywood Plan Amendment, this will be used by our government as a reverse amendment, forcing small businesses to sell their property and move out, transfer to wealthy private developers. And of course, we don't count small businesses who can't afford the legal costs of the court fight and are forced to sell without going to condemnation. The threat of eminent domain is a powerful tool. All citizens should be concerned. In this case, the eminent domain affects the entire project area, covers about 1,100 acres. You should be concerned whether you're a business owner, a tenant in a small commercial building, or a satisfied customer. From Franklin Avenue to Santa Monica Boulevard, from La Brea to Western, the use of eminent domain has a potential to contribute to crime by casting a cloud of uncertainty to small businesses in the project area. Whether you're a new business just moving in and investing in upgrades for a 10-year lease, or a long-term business reinvesting through modeling and updating, you're going to think twice about the investment and wonder if a developer has an eye on your block. During April 30th, hearing, one council member acknowledged a series checker passed, including behemoth projects. Let's put a tighter control on the abuse of power and not reward wealthy developers with this government handout. And let's learn from the past and not repeat our mistakes. Thank you very much. Our final speaker, you may move forward. You, ma'am.
Good morning, everybody. Are the costs of the hidden government, the community redevelopment agency, being borne by the city council, do you know that they owe $50 billion, that's without interest, with interest, it's $110 to $115 billion to date? Until you say no to the CRA, we will not be able to find more police, more fires, and fire departments, the streets services, etc. You are carrying on as if you have money freely into the city. You have to take the open-ended credit card away from the CRA. They cannot have an open-ended. There's no cap. And it can go on for years. They want to go with the time, the amount of money they borrow. And when the CRA comes in first, that's the first thing they do is borrow money. After this amendment is passed, they're going for bonds straight away. And I think that's atrocious, considering the state of the city. Thank you. And I'd ask to follow in regarding. And I'd ask to follow in regarding. Regarding the redevelopment plan. The city council should have extended public hearing on this matter, public hearing on this matter. In April 30th, 2003. Following the public hearing, the audience was closed. For that reason, no need for the public to comment. Additional copies of the transcript of this hearing were submitted to all members of the council before the hearing. To the members who know the comments that were submitted, I would like to remind you that the comments were submitted to all members of the council before the hearing. Continuing the conversation on item number 12. I would like to remind you that the members of the council have not yet seen the votes. We will proceed with the next question. The next question is, is there any objection? We would like to see if the members of the council have any objections. Seeing none. Mr. Clerk, please open the roll on item number 1. Please close the roll and tabulate the vote. Next item, please.
Items 2 through 5 are street lighting district items noted for public hearing. The Council should deny the protest and adopt the ordinances confirming assessments.
And I do not have requests from members of the public to address the council on items 2 through 5. Public hearings are therefore now open and closed. Members who should call items 2 through 5 special. Items 2 through 5 are specials. Seeing none. Mr. Clerk, please open the roll on items 2 through 5. Please close the roll and tabulate the vote.
11 ayes.
Next item, please.
Items 6 through 9 are also street lighting district items noted for public hearing. The Council should continue the hearings to June 10.
Item 6 through 9 now before us. I do not have requests from members of the public to address the council today on these items, which have been opened and without objection, continued to June 10, three weeks from today.
Items 10 through 31 are items for which public hearings have been held. On item 17 and Information Technology and General Services Committee report, public safety communication has been distributed to all members. A motion is required.
Okay, members, items 10 through 31 now before us. Public hearings have been held in committee or previously on these items. A motion is required to reopen the public hearings. Are there any specials? Mr. Weiss? 23, call special by Mr. Weiss. Any other specials? 12, call special by Ms. Garcia. Ms. Msakowski?
17.
17, call special by Ms. Msakowski. Any other specials?
Mr. President, there's been requests to continue item 24 to June 3rd. Is there any objection to continuing item 24 to June 3rd, two weeks from today? Without objection.
Any other specials? 14, call special by Ms. Laban and Ms. Han. Any other specials? 16, call special by Ms. Msakowski. Any other specials? Specials going once, specials going twice. Mr. Clerk, on the balance of the items, please open the roll. Please close the roll and tabulate the vote.
11 ayes.
Those matters are approved. Items 10 and 11 are ordinance and carry over for a second reading. Next item, please.
Items 32 through 46 are items for which public hearings have not been held.
Items 32 through 46 now before us. They do have calls. Items 33, 39, and 43 will call those matters special. Item 40 has been continued. Ms. Laban?
38.
38, call special by Ms. Laban. Any other specials? Seeing none. Mr. Clerk, please open the roll on the balance of the items. Please close the roll and tabulate the vote.
11 ayes.
Those are approved. Next items, please.
On the continuation agenda, item 47 is an item for which public hearing has not been held.
Item 47 now before us. And I do not have requests from members of the public to address the council on this item. Public hearings are therefore now open and closed. Members who should call items 47. Seeing none. Mr. Clerk, please open the roll on item 47. Please close the roll and tabulate the vote.
11 ayes.
Next item, please.
Thank you, Mr. President. And I know that many of you are very patiently listening to three hours of testimony on the redevelopment plan. I would like to ask speakers to keep their comments to about a minute.
Members who have a motion to reopen the public hearing for a period of five minutes. And technically, we're not reopening public comment. I understand we're taking additional public comment. Is there any objection? Seeing none. Let's proceed to hear from members of the public on item number 12. Will the following people please come forward in line up behind the podium? Council calls Mr. Leonard Shapiro, David Morgan, Chris Shabel, Howard Watts, John Walsh, and Robert Blue, total of five minutes.
Okay, David Morgan, Howard, and Better Government Association. The public power private gain book has now been released, and we filed a copy of it on eminent domain takings for private interest. This is completely illegal, as I said last time. I had just given you a copy of all the members of the council. The conspiracy CRA, CRA's lobbyist, CRA Association, California, we, City Council's paying him over $100,000 in lobbying fees, and he's exposed the inner secrets of the CRA. It's in the declarations submitted. And last, but most important, is the budget. I've given each council member a copy of the document showing how $500 million can be recovered from the CIA interest fund in the years to come. They will transfer the project to the City Municipal Code. If you need money for the police, this is the way to get it. If you want to balance your budget, here's a lot of money available, and some of it will be available in the coming years. So please consider this. Thank you.
Very much.
John Walsh. Hollywood is a hellhole just yesterday. A carjacking, a murder, a week ago. Capitol records in front of the building, a murder. Hollywood has been de-developed by the CRA. And this agency, this board, spends all your time putting together your discretionary accounts to help your friends and give all money to your buddies. Listen, you have a one and a half billion dollar CRA debt. You know what Chief Bratton said when you rejected more police? He said that this city council was issuing an invitation to Osama bin Laden. He said terrorism is the result. Now you want to lift the debt limit and allow this agency to spend more of our money off the top of the city property taxes. You know what's happening here today? Every one of you is issuing another one, another invitation to Osama bin Laden, the CRA's best friend. And I want to tell you, the Chief Bratton eye, well, if an officer is killed because you didn't put enough money, when you couldn't find the money for the CRA, we are going to dip our hands in the blood of the fallen officer and splatter in the faces of every single city council in here. That's what happened.
Thank you very much. Next speaker, please.
My name is Leonard Shapiro. I come here once in a while. I write for the Watch Times and the Plukent Times. I want everybody here to understand what community redevelopment stands for, the CRA. Too many people don't know it. The money from the CRA financing comes from property taxes of the future, of our children and our grandchildren, who are being saddled by you right now. You make the loan, you put it on there, and then they have to pay the end. Don't kid yourself. This thing should be treated just like if it were appropriate. That you are appropriating dollars to be spent. Don't think it's something you're getting free. It isn't free. It's property taxes, and we have to understand that. Like, in the Hollywood area at the present time, there was $150 million of city tax property dollars spent to build a parking structure. And then $50 million was spent to roads to come into the parking structure. $200 million was spent. Can't you use that $200 million now? There's no reason that that money could be used. And you've got to use it effectively. You're wasting it.
Thank you very much. We have a minute fifteen left. Three speaker cards. Robert Blue, Howard Watts, Chris Shabel.
Thank you. The issue here is not whether you should pass the Hollywood plan or oppose it. I think we're going to find out that we indeed have great treasures in our museums. But they would really probably like to have their own supervisor in charge of museums in the city of Los Angeles. Muchas gracias. Tom, take it home.
Hey, thank you very much. Muchas gracias. Thank you, Mr. John. It is wonderful of all the work that was done in the past as the city grows with the various museums. To get those historic sites focused on. But they are scattered about. And I think this motion by Mr. John does direct the proper thought process to see what the kind of impact it could make when we put them together. I would know that probably, the city administration would support things like this because they have a great history of culture and places. And I know in my district, Travel Town Transportation Museum, that it has thousands and thousands of kids and mothers and fathers come to the school every week. The importance of that, the importance of that, the importance of that is a historic site, which really is not as developed as much as it should be to make that connection. Whether that connection comes with the Pueblo authority or the other of the Pueblo. Whatever it takes, I think this city council at this time should allow us to go ahead and focus on it and come back with a plan that would only blossom of what great treasures that we have as museums and monuments for this city and for the county. And then further on, for future years, you can see the partnership with the state organizations and the state's historic... All the state's historic sites and the state park system and as well as with the county of Los Angeles. And I just think it's a great idea by Janice Hahn. That we need to move forward. Get everybody out of the way and put all those things together that will make it better for all people to learn about the history and to also learn about the great artifacts. So there is the great education that they will get when they go to a museum in the city of Los Angeles. Thank you. Muchas gracias. Thank you very much. The other members that said yes to the question? Say none. Mr. Clark, press the list in the number fourteen. Press the list and declare the vote. Once, si. It's approved. Next question, please. The question that we're going to discuss is...
Mr. President, can I have seventeen taken out of order? This motion, we're still waiting to be distributed on sixteen. So I think sixteen... I'm sixteen on the desk. I'm sixteen on the desk. We're going to press the next question. The question of seventeen, we're going to press the next question. Members, I thought this too needed to call everyone's attention. I'm going to ask Mr. Dean to come to the table. And Police Chief Don and the other staff to talk on this. Members, today we are taking one of the most important steps that we are required to take and committed to take under our agreement with the US Department of Justice and the Senate. A long part of this, perhaps, is why we got into some of the problems we got into in LAPD in the first place. We're not having an effective evaluation, training, and assessment management tool. Today, we are, after long work with our staff and determining what should be in such a mechanism, what should be in such a program, we are warning, asking, authorizing the city staff to negotiate a specific contract after having gone out and gotten bids for our... The negotiation that we're negotiating today is to have our city staff as unanimously recommended by them in a steering committee, not only recommended by our city officials, but by independent consultants that individual members of our steering committee utilized all agreement, all making the recommendation that is on the table today to move forward with CRA systems in an amount not to exceed twelve million dollars for a new team-to-system training, evaluation, and management tool. That will give the police department from here on out, once this is negotiated, once this is built, a tool, a tool, a tool, a tool. To manage all the officers in the department of police to know what is happening and have accountability from the top to the bottom. This has been a long time coming. It has been a long time, perhaps, since the first day of the government, but they haven't realized that they needed something like this. And through a variety of problems, they couldn't deliver it. But today, we are delivering, at least, a consensus from the city's team, from the Department of Justice, that we can move forward. And I ask for a vote, Mr. Clark. In the recommendation of the city, the committee of the... And the information technology general services that have a joint committee meeting yesterday morning at nine o'clock to bring this recommendation to you. The staff is here to answer any questions. But we don't have any questions. If you have anything to add, please do so. Please do so.
No, this is just a key element of compliance with consent. We're going to have a very important system. It's very important, we agree. We have the city council establishing a project led by the Department of Justice, who can support it, and other members to do a complete analysis of the requirements. We have the services from the Department of Justice, the Department of Police, and other members. The city council, which were a partner, a proposal, selected, they drafted a system, it was unanimous. The process of all the members of the Department of Police, they... And also, we have the possibility to employ our own contractors for the project. It's a nice, it's a nice one. And then, we're here for approval, for the final contract. And we're going to continue with this, with this system that we have for the decreto. Muchas gracias. The other members that said yes to the question? Say none. Press the list, Mr. Clark. Press the list and declare the vote. Once, si. It's approved. Next question, please. For the next, for the next... Question, please. Please, Mr. Wise.
I called item twenty-three special just to let you all know how much I appreciate Mr. Dean's committee attacking on matters and sending it out. Right now, in Congress, there is yet another debate about the Equal Rights Amendment, which many of you may remember from literally decades ago. It's important that we go on record supporting our representatives in Congress who are trying to make the ERA finally a reality in this country. And there are a couple of things you need to know about. One is the other line proposal is still alive and well in Congress. But the other is there's been sort of a procedural hitch over the years. Because the amendment was not ratified by a sufficient number of states within the initial time prescribed by Congress for ratification. And so there's a move afoot in Congress to extend the period of time for ratification. It's not clear as a legal matter whether the initial limitation on the ratification period was legitimate or not. It's also not clear whether this new effort, by contrast, would be effective or not. That's why Congressman Maloney has reintroduced the ERA itself. I think it's very important that we go on record supporting equal rights for everyone in this country. And that's why I put this matter forward, and I support it. Muchas gracias, Mr. Wise. The other members that said yes to the question? On item twenty-three. Mr. Clark, please hold the roll. Press the roll and declare the vote. Once, si. It's approved. Next question, please. The question of the twenty-third. We're going to press the twenty-third. The question of the twenty-third is between us. And we do have one speaker card with Leonard Shapiro. Leonard Shapiro.
Shapiro. Leonard Shapiro. The question that you have. The question of the twenty-nine. If you want to... The two questions, twenty-nine, twenty-nine. If you want to... Is it before us now? Thirty-three is before us. If you want to talk about thirty-nine as well, feel free. My name is Leonard Shapiro. And on item number thirty-three, it involves a transfer of a hundred and fifty thousand dollars for the anti-griddle transit improvement funds. And what this is part of is a general attempt to take care of the bad traffic situation which exists in the city of Los Angeles. We have six thousand five hundred miles of road of the six thousand five hundred twenty. May I have the attention of everybody in the city council? I waited a long time for the privilege of speaking. Miss Screw, I'll wait for you. I'm talking about the situation in the streets in the city of Los Angeles. And the streets, we have sixty-five hundred miles of road, of which twenty-five hundred miles are damaged beyond repair. They cannot be repaired anymore. Can't be tarred. They have to be completely ripped up and a new road put down there. In the United States, they took a survey of the damage that was caused to individuals' own cars. And LH by far, with eighteen hundred dollars per vehicle. The city of LA, despite four, the highest damage to cars that's caused by bad streets. We have the worst streets in the nation. And we got the damage that it does to ordinary cars. And that's a car that's in a... You can check this out, I can show you backup material on this. But what's needed here is not a hundred and fifty thousand dollars to fix gridlock in one area. What's needed is an overall study of what's going to happen to the streets of LA. We need, there's no question about it. You can't do two hundred miles of road a year with the mayor cut down to two fifty last year. You can't do that. There's more roads that are damaged beyond repair each year. Rather than just covering up two hundred... Somebody has to have a gun to say we need a bond issue. We need a bond issue to do something about the streets. And the sidewalks as well, which cause all kinds of damage. But the streets have to be taken care of. Two hundred miles, a year to resurface, just won't happen. Somebody's got to take that bull by the horn and do something about it. You can't sit back there and vote like you did on that CRA deal. These are important things that are happening. You've got to take care of the road. That's what I'm saying. And the members that said yes to the question? Say no, Mr. Clark. Press the roll. Press the roll and declare the vote. Once, si. It's approved. Next question, please.
The question of the twenty-eight. I'm going to press the twenty-eight. The question of 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 the twenty-eight. I'm going to change on this item here. On a special event. And I did handwrite on the bottom of the motion, maybe not in the approval of the style that the council wants, but it was done in the direction of what the clerk said would make it legal. So the clerk's okay with it, I'm okay with it. And the president, counsel. And then I'm going to press the vote. So it's better than the... Mr. John, we're going to press the twenty-eight. And then 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 we're going to press the twenty-eight. Press the roll. Press the roll and declare the vote. Once, si. It's approved. Next question. The question of the twenty-nine. We're going to press the twenty-nine. The question of the twenty-nine. The question of the twenty-nine.
Mr. President, members of the council, I have not had the opportunity to express my appreciation of how nice it is to be back here. Such attentive members are listening and understanding that Shapiro is here again. And you're going to hear different people on different subjects. Yes, I can talk a lot of subjects, we'll talk on this one. We're talking about the motion, verdicting prohibiting use of certain material. But again, here we're missing the basic point that's being raised by garbage disposal and by recycling in the city. In the city of LA, we wouldn't have any trouble at all to speak up if we recycled properly. Now, why God's creation? Doesn't the city council have the nerve to say? We want to make everybody recycle, not just the owners of homes, but we want people who live in condos and live in apartments to also recycle. We have to pass a law that they will recycle. Half, one half of all the possible recycled materials that eventually winds up in our landfills. And we can't talk here when other people are talking. And it's a matter of fact, because the city council is...
We're listening, Mr. Shapiro. Well, Mr. Perchek was talking to Cindy. He's talking. He can't listen at the same time, but you've got to get used to it. Maybe you get used to it, I can't get used to it. I am bringing up a point here before the council that you're not recycling properly. And somebody has to say, we've got to get the apartments and the condominiums in the recycling movement. Because otherwise, we're just spraying with ourselves. That isn't the way to do it. Do it properly. You're the city council, you can do it, right? Thank you, Mr. Shapiro. I'm going to press the public comment. The question of the twenty-nine. The other members that said yes to the question? Mr. John, thank you, Mr. Garcetti. I'll let Mr. Garcetti go first, because I'm going to ask him to be... Okay. Mr. Shapiro, you're right. And I hear you, and I raise you one. Not only should we be doing multifamily housing, we should also be doing businesses. And we actually are. Last year, we made sure that the additional tipping fees that were put in are going to come back to us so that we can start. It was already begun with multifamily housing and with businesses to do that recycling. We have a lot more to do, but you're right. I want you to know the fact that we're moving on that. This council made that action last year. We're going to not rest until we have them fully in a system recycling across the city. Thank you for your comments. Mr. John. Yes, I asked Mr. Perd to continue this matter one week. Thank you. The members have demanded that we continue this question for one week. There's a question. Say none. This question is continued for... It's going to be considered in May twenty-seven. Next question, please. The question of the forty-third. We're going to press the question for the public. And we know there's going to be a question in the beginning to talk about the number sixteen. But we have a question for the twenty-six. Then we're going to press the twenty-fourty-three. We have two questions. We're going to talk about Joe Walsh, and then Leonard Shapiro.
This item is another mystery item. We don't have the agenda for file on this item. This is in Hollywood. The streets of Hollywood are buckling and crumbling. This is what we're looking at. We have a multi-billion dollar governmental agency called the LA City... The city of LA, Department of Work. But they're not doing the work here. Your work, your work, your work, your work. They're asking for a private cooperation. A contractor to do the work. Every day, they're going to work. So what we're asking you now... That's what we're asking for now. You know, I'm so emotional here. I just wish the city would be better. It would be better than what it is. We're asking for eight. Complete breakdown on what's happening on Sycamore Street and why you had to bring in the consultant. The streets are crumbling. Thank you, Mr. Walsh. Sir Shapiro.
This is Shapiro talking on item forty-three again. Has to do with the appropriate seventeen thousand dollars for the engineering fund. To perform a study for repairing a question on Second Mar Avenue. You just heard a man tell you about a specific issue. The only thing I'm talking about in general is, again, look at the big problem. You have a big problem of streets and streetwear and sidewalk repair facing you. You could either ignore it like you've been doing for twenty years, or you could say we're going to do something about it. I think you can do something about it. I think you can face the problem. And not do piecemeal stuff, study this and study that and do this and do that. The problem just doesn't go away. You have a problem, you're a city council. You can study this whole problem. There is no reason why this entire problem can't be studied. And somewhere, somehow, somebody finds out. Somebody's got to do something about the streets. The city of Los Angeles, which are the worst in the United States of America. Thank you, Mr. Shapiro. I want to comment on the public comment. The question of the twenty-three. Mr. John.
And Mr. Shapiro, I want to talk to you right now. Sycamore is in my district. The street was failing. A home and a family was in danger. The city of Los Angeles took quick action. So we made this repair. The water was running towards the house instead of down the street. And it was a very serious condition. This council, the Department of Public, the city of San Jose, we're working quickly on this. And it needs to be done. And there are a lot of great streets in Los Angeles. And we've got to make more great streets. It's not the worst place in the world. And this is not the worst streets in the world. We have the worst jobs. We're going to rebuild the streets. We're going to rebuild the streets. Some of the worst parts of Los Angeles are being repaired. Members, we're going to do it.
Miembros, el señor Labancho, pido un voto en esto, esto es importante. Por el resorte anual, arriba a la vuelta la que está corriendo de la calle a la casa, causando fallo a una casa. Doy las gracias, acción rápida, necesaria. Gracias, señor Labancho, gracias por la acción rápida que está haciendo yo para sus 25,000. Nosotros vimos que se enceroí. Diga señor, abra la lista, tabulce la de la lista y tabulce el voto. Entonces sí, está aprobado. Hasta por eso el próximo asunto, señor Garsette, podemos recoger número 12, tenemos 12 miembros son ordenanzas, se pueden votar en eso. Miembros tenemos, hemos separado consideración del asunto número 12. Abre la lista de consideración, si eres en la lista tabulce el voto. 12, si eres en ese asunto, nos estamos 12 miembros presentes y una unidad para votar a la ordenanza. Y deshacernos de ello, a menos que se haga maya discusión, abre la lista otra vez el número 12, si eres en la lista tabulce el voto. Entonces sí, el asunto está aprobado, vamos a mandar ese para adelante. Próximo y creo que el asunto final todos en el litro, número 16, se llama expresación de la mala causa, se llama la medida 17, estuviera para todos los números, señora Macaus. Estoy decidida a decir la caja como presidente del comité, para presentar el reporte del comité, mi moción. En ese momento el reporte del comité para cuidadosamente. Es decir, lo que el comité recomienda, lo que se acordó, pero hay ni si. Del director, pero feliz sobre la señora.
Gracias, señor. Primeramente, queremos dar las gracias por traer esto la atención del consejo y certamente para educar. This is about how we go forward and renegotiate our contract with the EIDC. And it was clear from the public hearing that we held here in council chambers, it was packed from concerned neighborhood homeowners, but it was also packed with people from the industry. And the dual message that we heard that morning was certainly the film industry is an integral part of Los Angeles and our economy. It's one of the industries that we frankly are most proud of and that many of us point to and it's a source of pride frankly in the neighborhoods when a particular known property or or city building or recognizable area is shown in a movie. I mean, people love that. It brings a sense of identity to neighborhoods. But we also heard was from many residents of neighborhoods who felt sometimes trampled upon, sometimes over excessive burdens were placed on neighborhoods and residences because of the filming in their community. And there was a sense that before we as a city renegotiate this contract, before we look at an overall policy of how we can best balance the needs of the film industry with the needs of the neighborhoods, there needed to be input from our neighborhood councils, from our homeowners, from chambers of commerce. We heard from business districts that also were feeling some of the burdens of the film industry in their business corridors. And originally we thought about forming a citywide task force of neighborhood councils much like the burglar alarm task force. It came back with recommendations on how we move forward. But after the public hearing and what consensus from the committee members, we decided the big difference between this and the burglar alarm issue was the burglar alarm policy was inactive and pretty much presented and told that it was happening without any opportunity for neighborhood councils to weigh in on the policy. The difference here is we are at the beginning of the stages. We are right now at the point where we can take input. We can hear from neighborhoods, we can hear from chambers of commerce before we renegotiate this contract. And frankly, many of us on the committee were very impressed that the EIDC with the interim director Keith Comrie and with their consultants KPMG were actually setting forth a strategy where they talked about ultimately having neighborhood council representatives on the board where they would consider hiring a community liaison to deal with those issues on an ongoing basis. So we on the committee felt like what we wanted to make sure in this process, we wanted to report back on how they were getting input from neighborhood councils, how they were getting the input from business people, how they were getting this input on the concerns that people had about the film ministry. And then how would they resolve those issues as we move forward even after the contract was negotiated? We were comfortable that they were setting out in the right path. I think what Cindy's amendment motion does here is ensure that they hold public forums as a way of getting input into this process. So at this point, my committee was recommending to the full city council that we move forward and instead of instituting a citywide task force to give recommendations, we would actually empower neighborhood councils, ethics is now to give input into the process as it moves forward, always preserving the right. If we don't feel like there's enough neighborhood input, if we don't feel like you're actually taking this input seriously, then we can go on a different course. But I would ask you to support our committee recommendations for the city council today. Muchas gracias, señora Macaus. Thank you. And members, I wanted you to have that presentation with the chair because what this really has been, as Janice indicated, is a collaboration. My motion initially asked that the city of Los Angeles would undertake this study, this effort, work with our neighborhood councils and get that input. But I want to commend the interim executive director of EIDC and its members who came here in full and said we will take ourselves that responsibility. We're doing it now by way of KPMG, doing outreach to people who have concerns, asking freely anyone who has a concern, any which way to contact them. They agreed and they were willing to set up a public forum process in various communities at their own discretion to deal with it. The city attorney had had some concern and I just want to underscore, this motion and this amendment is not direct to do anything. We don't have that authority to do anything. They agreed and indicated that this would be part of the process that they themselves would conduct and we then we see that. And Ms. Han is so right in that this is ahead of the process. I think the council and others have appropriately been concerned about issues at EIDC and address those concerns first, looking at restructuring, looking at accountability, looking at issues that are perhaps the most fundamental job and that is to do is job well. This is the secondary level to say as it does job well in our communities, providing both jobs, it's also in community. And community has to have understanding, buy in and be handled with respect and we handle every other aspect of their restructuring. Now, only is there a possibility in terms of looking at the restructure with members of non-industry members of just communities being able to be considered as board members, but Mr. Comrie, even with the clause to say the executive director should meet on a regular basis with anyone who has input community, neighborhood, industry as well. Not necessarily empower a community leader on person, but to really bring the executive director himself to the table to here to understand and then put forward solutions. So I think we are in a tremendous situation right now, recognizing that's necessary across the board, recognizing that this is going to be a partnership. And I think it bodes well for that new partnership, for that understanding of the incredible economic engine this industry is in our town and how we want to facilitate it within the bounds, within the reason of neighborhood quality of life preservation issues. We hear those two things time and again, they can be compatible, I think we're together in this process, we can achieve that. So I ask for my vote on the committee report with the amendment for item number three. Muchas gracias, señor presidente. I rise in support today of the motion amendment and the committee reports that came out and give a lot of credit to those of you, Mr. Pedee, Mr. Labancho, Ms. Han and of course Ms. Sackowski. And Mr. Weiss was there actually that day, we had the public hearing. And these chambers were filled with individuals who care about the future of the entertainment industry and care about ensuring that we work closely with our communities as well. As Ms. Sackowski mentioned, this is about an economic engine of our city, about an opportunity for us to continue to have an economic boom. Really, we have no Fortune 500 companies here in Los Angeles anymore and the entertainment industry has really become our own Fortune 500 here with the high quality jobs that they are able to produce here. As someone in the last nine months who came on to the executive committee in July of last year, we've been working very diligently on the EIDC and with the leadership of the entertainment industry with Mr. Comrie, with Lynn Parsons and the board have been trying to make some substantive changes to that organization to respond to the needs of the community and fiduciary responsibility we have as a board. And that as a independent entity and one that we're negotiating with on our actual contract right now, this is an appropriate time for us to have that public input. I chair the restructuring committee of the EIDC board where we're looking at how to change that structure, where we've been talking about how to involve the community to have participation on the board of directors that are from either neighborhood councils or associations, similarly to have an advisory group that meets monthly or bi-monthly with the executive director or president of the organization about concerns. So this motion allows us to continue to have that, I think, independent and important public input as we renegotiate that contract. And I just want to commend, I know the industry has supported that public input occurring in this manner in which we have those public forums to come back and I think this was a good compromise as well as we move ahead to ensure we have a EIDC that is strong, a community that's supported in an industry that is gets the message from the city of Los Angeles that we appreciate and being here, we want to encourage production as much as possible. So I support the committee report and the amendment, Ms. Sackowski, introduce today. Gracias, señora Agullos, señora Per. Thanks very much, señor presidente. Esto pues es una pregunta para la señora. In the downtown area, I have residential areas that are growing and transitioning from industrial areas or adaptive reuse areas and I think that in many cases, a lot of the film companies are not aware that people are living in certain pockets. Not everybody is affiliated with a neighborhood council or. I plan on having a meeting in my own district to prepare a plan that is specific to my own district. Does this accommodate people who are not affiliated and if you could tell me how? I mean, that's exactly the point of having these public forums is to kind of cast that net out a little bit farther than just neighborhood councils or chambers of commerce. And it is to try to get input from a wide variety of such. But I think what you're doing is what each council, district should actually do is look at their own council district and look at ways that you can solicit input. And then we get that input over to KPMG and the EIDC so that they get every input from every district in Los Angeles. I think what you're doing is right. Señor Labancho. Señor presidente. Cindy and Janice and Wendy and all those Eric and who've been involved in this. It is extremely important to us to look at the motion pitcher making. When they came out west because the weather was good. But they also wanted to get away from the producers. And I'm reading the story of Hollywood, right? Because they didn't want anybody over their shoulder telling them how to make a film. And they came out on Glendale Boulevard, Eaton Dale Grill and now the music, not Eaton Dale Grill, but Eaton Dale section right by the post office there where the music center still. All is one of the old storage places. What was motion pitchers and now it's grown and grown and it's in all our neighborhoods. It's so important for neighborhoods. It's absolutely so important. Los 200 y más angeles. Southern Californians and others who work here, that let us know here. It's so important too that we reach out and it's a very face down downtown. We must balance that out because there's no city that you could shoot New York, Chicago, Los Angeles. What did I watch last night? I did get home early. I watched Jim Rockford. And Jim Rockford is doing a change. All the way around Los Angeles. And Jim Rockford. And Jim Rockford. And James Gardner speaking about it. And that's so important to have that. But at the same time, to have a balance and to be aware that people are living in neighborhoods at the same time, to have a balance and to stationarse afuera and to work with communities and to work with the neighbors. But we're not just the neighborhoods. But we're the neighborhoods. I know sometimes when filming is done in Chinatown, it creates a problem for the merchants there that should be addressed. So I think this is a great step forward. I myself in my outreach, which we all do, in different ways to our constituency. And one of my community congresses will have representatives for the film industry there to talk about what they do and how they can balance out the needs of the neighborhood. And then I closed for the last line that they said many, many years ago. Black is walking, but a lullaby. I'm not going to let it go in the face of the law, man, to let the people in Los Angeles working and not going around the country, around the world making pictures. I'm very disappointed that Warner Brothers is thinking of making Superman in New Zealand. I have nothing against New Zealand. But certainly Superman should be made here in the United States of America. And here in Los Angeles, we all know. Because we know that this is the main scene. The scene of the Superman, the 50th. Remember how he flew out of that obscenity across the sky and they started the adventures of Superman. So continue the adventure of filmmaking in Los Angeles with the studies between neighborhoods. We'll get some good representatives involved with that. And Keith Comrie and his great work he's done for many, many years. Representative of Los Angeles, representative of the county, and now as a private citizen but representative of the public. Thank you, señor presidente. Gracias, señor Garsette. Gracias, señor presidente. Yo creo que todos han dicho ya, que no hay de todos que están aquí, muchos de los cuales tomaron parte en el cal de. Entiende de los estudios y desarrollo aquí en la ciudad. Yo creo que lo mejor anuncio de lo que hemos visto de todo este proceso es el reconocimiento de los dos lados como lo que está pasando. Todos sabían que los concilios de los vecindarios que los dos lados se benefician. When those relationships are made strong between neighborhood leaders and leaders from the entertainment industry, we can actually have a community, we can actually have neighborhoods. That's what it's about. And the more that we have, the more that we insulate each other from one another, is the more difficult these things are to work out. Every single shoot will have peculiarities. Every single time there's a permit taken out, there are going to be individual challenges. Location managers know that. They've known that for a long time, I think. Residents have known that who have experienced filming in their areas. But what's critical in the structure of this is to make sure that we don't insulate each other from each other anymore. It's okay for producers to occasionally to hear from the community. We do it every single day and that's great. You hear the good, the bad. It makes you rethink what you have to do and it humanizes this whole process. So I just wanted to say something very briefly on that. And incorporating as much as we can, neighborhood based representatives or advocates, in the same way that senior leaders get to know a neighborhood over time, the same way that managers get to know a neighborhood over time. It can mean for a neighborhood the difference between an intruder and a friend who's there. And to me, I think that's the most critical step in making sure that we're able to move forward with filming in our communities is to allow somebody to have a familiar face to work through these problems and they do that. So with that, I think that's a step forward. Thanks for coming in. Gracias por venir ahora. Gracias, señor Garsette, señor Labancho, quiere ser oída otra vez? No, no, no sé cómo pasó. Si vos querés ser oídos. Diga señor, señor secretario, creo que podemos considerar el asunto como está amendado. Abre la lista, si eres en la lista tabulce el voto. Entonces sí, eso está aprobado. Próximo asunto, por favor. Señor presidente, ante especial uno fue. Seconded by Councilmember Sackowski and the attorney will speak to the direct findings. Thank you, señor presidente. Now read into the record the findings for councils to consider. Subsequent to the posting of today's agenda, it has come to the city's attention that prospective bidders on lease revenue refunding bonds for the convention center have some concern regarding the applicable law to cover the information of the swap agreement. Immediate action is required in order to receive prospective bids on April 27. Pursuit of government code, council must determine whether there is a need to take immediate action and that the need for action came to the attention of council after the posting of today's agenda. If such finding is made, council may consider the signing of the motion.
On the findings, seeing none, Mr. Clerk, please open the room. On the findings, disclose the rules and tell the lead.
Twelve eyes.
Special one is now before us on the motion itself. Please offer the motion, Mr. Pacheco.
Mr. President, this is a motion that basically sets a jurisdiction for any legal dispute in our refinance center. And we have worked with the attorneys and the attorneys for the law to be confident with using New York case law if there were ever to be a dispute in our refinance in the convention center. It's very important that we move forward from the standpoint that it's going to save us money in our refinance in the long run. So, urgent, I vote.
Mr. Pacheco. Mr. White. Ah, bueno.
Just can't help myself because conflicts were my favorite course in law school. What do we usually do?
Que usualmente hacemos.
Choice of law.
That in a typical contract.
En un contrato típico.
A non-financial contract, typically California law would apply. Certainly in this contract, California law applies to power and authority of the city. That would be governed by California law primarily. Some case law under the constitution. What the other side is asked for is they want New York law to apply to enforceability, meaning the various terms of the contract, which the city has agreed to as what I call a business matter. They have a higher degree of comfort for those provisions to be enforceable under New York law, which is perceived by them rightly or wrongly as a more investment contract friendly user than another state such as California. In this area, I'm not sure frankly because there's so little law on the enforceability of swaps. California's got basically a statute, a relatively short statute, and New York has something similar. But swaps are a fairly new breed of security and therefore they're hit a lot long. One can draw by analogy to other types of laws and they're probably right. Through analogy, there's more New York authority than there is California authority.
Do we have any other contracts that we enter into where we don't require someone doing business with the city of Los Angeles to have California law apply? I can't answer that. I'm not sure. From the city attorney's office, yes, we think we do. There are investment agreements, but in those agreements, we are just really receiving interest. We don't have to do anything. We don't pay anything. We're getting interest earnings on our money.
But one thing I might mention. The process the city's chosen to follow to do this swap agreement is similar to a competitive bid process for bonds. And the goal here is to reduce the cost and according to financial values for the city, they believe that the cost in dollars will be significantly less than if they went to just one counterparty and said we're going to negotiate with you. The consequences of making that decision. The bidders are asking for something more uniform and for them means at least on the enforceability issue, having New York law apply.
You say swaps are relatively new?
Certainly transactions with application agencies.
So do you know what the practices are?
When the agency is swapping, it's not a super bidding. This is the first competitive bid that I'm aware of. The negotiating sales under ones I've seen have gone both ways. Some have said New York law apply, some have said California law apply.
Could you just do me a favor and everybody at the table identify yourself and the agency you're from so I can just know. I take it you all agree with this. So I just want to see who's on the record.
Margie Currier with the city attorney's office. Marlo Levin, C.A.O.'s office.
Paul Weber of Orycrayton in Settcliff. Colton Chu from the city attorney's office. Captain Scott from Public Resources Advisory Group, a financial advisor on this transaction.
Okay, so the city attorney's office is advising us to do this?
Está consiguiendo hacer esto?
Yes. And the C.A.O. is advising us to do this?
Yes.
Outside, financial advisors are advising us to do this?
Absolutely, yes.
And what is telling us? Do it. I'll do it. But there's no, but I'm interested that there's obviously some perceived advantage that the other.
Much of the genesis of this contract came from other financial agreements such as the ones that Colin mentioned, investment agreements. And they were kind of like topsy and they just grew. And since the investment community is sort of resident in New York and since they were the ones who drafted what ostensibly the uniform documents. It doesn't come as a surprise that they're looking to have, they at least believe it's more favorable to them.
They're more likely to have lawyers here than we are to have lawyers in New York.
Thank you, Mr. President.
Gracias, señor presidente. Gracias, señor presidente. Especial uno. No, no. No voy a abrir la lista en especial uno. Abre la lista y tomes el voto. Dos, sí. Está aprobado para adelante, por favor. Proximo asunto, por favor. Gracias. Ahora es un tiempo para los comentares del público. Comentarios públicos para la junta de hoy. Ahora llama para adelante. Señor David Morgan, llamado por Leonard Shapiro and Robert Blue and other speakers to follow. Que pueden ir para adelante.
I'd like to bring to the attention of the council the fact that the council has approved annually, if we have something like $20,000 a year for William Carlson and the California Redevelopment Association as a lobbyist. What has happened is that they are admitting, this lobbyist has admitted, very things that we have contended the CRA is up to. And I want to quote a couple, a few of the things he's said in a secret meeting of his association. We are redeveloping areas that have been redeveloped, a city with half a brain can launder money. There are very few projects that have real blood. Therefore, we need the shades of white approach. That is the fake white approach I explained to you in the previous testimony. Using public money to lobby is questionable. He's questioning the money he's receiving from. The goal of redevelopment is to stay in debt. There is no intent for any project area to be out of debt and back on the regular tax rolls. There is no legitimacy to redevelopment purposes. If the city council does not understand the complicated financial shuffling, the project will go through because individual council members do not want to appear stupid and be put into a position because they don't understand in the first place. So I urge you to cut off the funding to the California Redevelopment Association the next time it comes up and to read the testimony that I have presented from these declarations. Thank you very much. Next speaker, Mr. Leonard Shapiro, followed by Robert Blue and Chris Shabel. Mr. President and council members, I don't want to repeat what I said before even though there's some new council people here to listen. But I want everybody to understand what you did today when you voted 11 to nothing for that amendment to the Hollywood plan. You are mortgaging the lives of your children and grandchildren. Remember that. There's also another thing you can remember from the history. 750 million dollars was spent on downtown financing and the only reason it didn't go to five billion was because of a guy named Bernie Bernardi. One council person had the guts to fight it and he fought it and he stopped them. So what did you guys do? You had an end run. You got two new projects here for $3 billion dollars. What already stopped, you continue. The whole point on this thing is that they were reorganizing the CRA board. They have an infamous record of quietly doing favors for politically favored developers. They allowed downtown L.A. to deteriorate while frittering away all its tax income money on campaign contributing developers who got rich building skyscrapers and paid very little taxes to the city and don't even pay back their debts. Thank you, Mr. Shapiro. Let me ask Mr. Robert Blue to come forward next. Chris Shabel, John Walsh and Naill Roman. Thank you for your help, Mr. Walsh.
Robert Blue had to go back to work. Today we live in infamy. The city council voted against public safety and for the community redevelopment and an open credit counter. The vote was against having more police in a heightened state of terrorist activity. The vote was by every council person present. There was not even any opposition. I know that you're all concerned about your own districts. But when a project that has been millions in the past 17 years, why hasn't one of you asked one question? And whose job are you slating for? As, I'm sorry. I thought I could read it all without a glasses. That you're slating for a pink slip. Because your yes vote on the council today on the community redevelopment agency will help the city faster forward to bankruptcy as Councilman White stated in his concerns on the budget. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Walsh. Followed by Naill Roman.
Have a little news in case you didn't know. Yesterday, the grand jury, county grand jury, met concerning EIDC scandal. Entertainment Industry Development Corporation, Location Gate. There have been complaints that all 15 of you are under investigation. Mayor Reardon is under investigation. Steve Coolie yesterday met in secret. I don't know how many of you know. And the fact two, three of your names, thanks to our mo, were mentioned. There may be indictments. As far as the CRA is concerned, we have some demands. We demand that Laura Chek audit the debt portfolio and the half a billion dollars of uncollectible debts. We ask Laura Chek to make a debt assessment. How much of these bad loans and the billion and a half that you have to pay off is going to impact the city, not our grandchildren, next month? You're not interested. You're like a kid in a money store. It's the money store. It's for your friends and every dollar you waste in Hollywood is three dollars of debt for the 50,000 people who are watching me now. This room is empty, but 50,000 politically aware people in the city of Los Angeles are there. Make a phone call to these people and tell them what they are. We're asking Diane Watson to do a C.A.O. investigation, order one on misuse of FEMA funds. Millions of dollars of FEMA funds wasted by the CRA. We're asking you up to do an investigation of the CRA. Look, you know, you want to keep these people quiet. Look at their quiet church vice. And ominous by, we have asked Rocky Delvede to do a criminal investigation concerning illegal condemnation activities by Josh Kaminsky. People have been I would like to say. I would like to say. They have the right to do this. They have the right to do this. They have the right to do this.
Thank you, Mr. Walsh. We have three more speakers.
We have three more speakers. I have number 33. 33.
We have Naill Roman, Howard Walsh and Michelle Crumay.
First of all, I'd like to thank you for giving this opportunity to come before you. My reason for being here is to find out what are my legal rights concerning my being a tenant at Santa Barbara Plaza. The project that is being displaced. We have, we have told that we have many days to get out of that area. We have businesses that are being destroyed because the new property owner is not fixing the roof of the property. It is leaked into there. I'm a small business producer filming TV and I can't work none of my equipment. And they have not given us the money for relocation. So I was wondering, do we have any legal rights in that area? Santa Barbara Plaza. The 8th District.
Thank you, sir. I know Mr. Labancho is out of his mind. He's trying to get the C.A.O. definitely for the 8th District here to explain what kind of canot be done and help this gentleman. Thank you. I would like to have a seat. I'm sure we'll get somebody out here to speak with you. Mr. Howard Walsh.
I would like to ask Eric Garcetti if he could tell me where his name is in front of his seat. Up there doesn't help anybody. Names in front of your seats tell everybody in the audience where we need you to be. If you walk around, we can't find you in your seat. I happen to feel up there is not helping us at all. Over here on these seats, we can see who you are and we then can say to ourselves, not out loud, we don't like you. But we can't do it without saying the names on these counters. I would, if I had the money, buy each of you a sign for you. I don't have it though. Vamos a hacerlo.
Thank you very much.
Muchas gracias.
My name is Michelle Verme. The county is closing down healthcare facilities and was only recently ordered to continue to operate Rancho Los Amigos in spite of funding problems. Any CRA redevelopment project reduces county funds by diverting them into the coffers of the CRA. Is the CRA going to operate emergency medical facilities with its tax increment money even within the project area? Of course not. Mr. Garcetti, you seem very interested in your constituents in the Silver Lake area and also from the entertainment industry. But what about your real constituents, your constituents in Hollywood who've been through this thing for years? I think that maybe you should go up the street and see the play that's going to be played there called Chavez Ravine. Okay. Well, this in a sense may be your Chavez Ravine. It may not be as dramatic, but it really affects people's lives. Eminent domain and redevelopment affects people. This is not just a political decision. This is also a human decision. And when you displace people from a community, it changes the whole shape of the community. That's the one nice thing about San Pedro, that you have a real community. And, you know, we need, this tax increment, they did it in my area. I live in South L.A. and we litigated and we stopped it for five years. For five years, Mark Regley Thomas and CRA couldn't float the bonds. The bond houses in New York couldn't float the bonds. But this is going to affect little businesses and changing neighborhoods. And I know because I grew up or live near where Mrs. Han grew up on 77th Street. And they did it in our neighborhood and when Mark Regley Thomas gave a representation to the council about our area, he made it sound like it was all blighted. And you know because you live there and I live there. It is not blighted. And the same thing with all of Hollywood. Maybe what it needs is some fixing up, but not tearing down and not just putting a big box development. Thank you.
Thank you very much. This concludes the comments for today's meeting. Mr. Clerk, next up, please.
Council has motions for posting and referral. Motion to shut the post and refer. There are excuses on the desk. Councilmember Hart requests to be excused to leave early Wednesday, May 21st and Friday, May 30th at 11:45 for city business meets policy. As Hart is excused. Councilmember Labancho requests to leave early Wednesday, May 21st at 11:00 a.m. for city business meets policy. Mr. Labancho is excused. Councilmember Zine requests to arrive late at 11:45 Wednesday, May 21st for city business meets policy. Mr. Zine is excused. And Councilmember Reyes requests to arrive late Wednesday, May 21st and Friday, May 23rd at 10:30 for city business. Motion is required.
Mr. White is excused.
Back there's the desk.
Members, are there any announcements today? We have one announcement. Mr. Holden for an announcement.
Miembros, ayer. Todo lo que todo este mundo tiene es falta porque lo que pasa es que ya no está aquí. Y ellos dejaron para el voto unánime. Votó para poner una tapa de cuánto pueden gastar para un automóvil. Esto es muy simple. En la mente de muchos estos son, 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 necesitan carro más grande. Y los precios cambian. Siguen subiendo. Yo nunca, si su emoción es esa va. Yo nunca miré soportadas poniéndole, pues hacen esta conserva de esa manera. Déjenlos que jueguen, déjen que deciden. Nosotros lo hemos hecho por 16 años. Y cuando esto regresa ante mí, voy a decirles que se puede pararlo, tampoco quieren trabajar que deciden. Eso decimos bien, no les da, no es justo decir eso. Que su decisión no viene de la, de la, de la, es justo de ser eso, para nada. Yo quiero que esté aquí para hacer esa declaración, para hacer otra declaración. Hoy es el último día que van a tener, una persona como sea en el distrito, muy satisfecho de hoy, van a tener una persona con, dejar el, hoy es el día de elección. Un par de gente están corriendo, pero eso es, mi sucesor va a ser elegido hoy. Como nos damos hasta las manos de la gente, y van a hacer esa decisión. Entonces, ellos se van a decir, les salgan a hacer sus cosas, saben que es bueno para ustedes, y yo sé que van a hacer la decisión bien, y es siempre lo que la gente solamente hace. Entonces, pues, los, los decis, eh, no sé, ya no va a tener como para llamar especial.
Thank you, Mr. Holden. Another announcement, Mr. Watts.
Gracias, señor presidente, ya no sé, pues... Me gustaría que todos sepa que yo pedía, que el pasado, la semana pasada, les hice una inclusión de narde saludo, le dieron su voto, le pedí a Sir Morton, le dije que pusiera a hablar para usted cuando se vaya, por favor, toma, está roto, si se puede empujar, no lo voy a abrir tampoco, no voy a dejar de hablar.
Other announcements?
Otros anuncios hoy?
Adjournings motions.
La emoción es para terminar.
Please rise for adjournings motions.
Para la emoción es de terminar.
We ask some members of the public to please stand.
Miembros del público para que se pare.
Adjournings motions. Mr. Labad.
Yeah, thank you, members. I wasn't able to assist you to adjourn last week, but I wanted to adjourn in memory of Jude Carter Cash, the wife of Johnny Cash, one of the legends of country music, was very inspirational to her husband Johnny Cash, who I met as a young high school when he was out at the Hollywood Bowl, and it was great to meet the towering man in black. Saying to the throngs at the Hollywood Bowl, Jude Carter was from an entertainment family herself, and also had many great hits, including With a Circle, Be Unbroken, which is wonderful. So I asked to adjourn to her memory, and also would like this to adjourn in memory of Robert Stack. Nate Angelino went to Los Angeles High School, was a great actor, was very involved in the community throughout, very supportive of the Los Angeles Police Department. And I believe Eric was with us just ten days ago at the Johnny Grant celebration in Hollywood. Robert Stack was eighty-four years old. And members, for people that I think are, that we should join in, Bill Bueller, who was a great trader for the Los Angeles Dodgers, who would run out on the mound and find a way to heal the Dodgers, so that they could compete well. He was seventy-five years old, served the Dodgers for over forty years, and was very involved in the reconstruction of the building of Tommy John, which changed the way baseball players did for the rehabilitation when they had serious injuries. And I wanted to ask that you adjourn in memory of Bill Bueller. And also, members, I ask that we adjourn in memory of Mal Florence, who was a Los Angeles Times sports columnist, seventy-seven years old, went to U S C, played football there, but also was a later sport writer. And we all enjoyed his work in the Los Angeles Times. He was, lived to be seventy-seven years old. And also, I saw the news, and I was down in the desert this last weekend, so I saw more news coverage. But Riverside Sheriff Deputy Bruce Lee, who was laid rest yesterday, was shot, was beaten with his baton, they say, on arriving at a domestic dispute in the desert, where there was a young man who was having problems with his mother in a domestic dispute, I believe in the early part of the morning, and comes in, and he unfortunately was beaten by this person, who later was killed by the deputy who responded with Bruce Lee, the Riverside County Deputy. Bruce Lee was born in Los Angeles and chose the professional law enforcement force, been served twenty-two years with the Riverside County Sheriff. And I ask that we adjourn in his memory. And also, members, John Peterson, Pete, who was he known for the Fire Department, served fifty-one years in the Los Angeles City Fire Department, last served at Station Twenty in Echo Park, and I was at Alish Park one day a couple years ago, he's since retired, but he retired. I went to a fire, Al Marrow, and there was Pete, all celebrating his seventieth birthday on Trump Twenty, in the midst of a house fire, doing the work of a great firefighter. He lived his life, his love of his life, of the Los Angeles City Fire Department. And lastly, I wanted to note that John Malkman, who was a Times journalist for the Los Angeles Times, he lived to be eighty-nine, and his photography...
Fue escrito para mostrarle su autografía, cuando nos lo salvamos de fotografía y su trabajo, su fotografía se ha muerto, que nosotros conocemos a sus conocidos, que somos los angelos interesantes, su gente, en la calle central. Cuando ganaron el cincuenta y nueve, y sigue eso, el periódico, y eso, también, todo, está derecho en el blog, en la, ofreciendo a la ley, era interesante ver cómo la gente respondió en sus desfiles y su trabajo, lo que es él, John, fotógrafo de la ley, los policías, los angelos, los angelinos, los angelinos han contribuido en su trabajo, en su trabajo, en su trabajo de, la parada atlético, y... Gracias, pues, yo pido que terminemos en la memoria de, 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 de,